He stopped it.
Next is Bruce.
Hi, Bruce Benyell, 301 Hawthorne. Kind of odd that, you know, we, I look at the agenda and it gives all these items that we can talk about, but there's no additional information to expand upon it. I'm here to talk about the burning ban that's going to get discussed. And this is the second item that has come up in recent weeks that involves personal property. Now, I don't have a dog in this fight. I don't burn. But what a person does on their personal property, as long as it's not affecting somebody else. Why is the city getting involved? My children get become homeless. I can't park the travel trailer on my property and assist them. Because he already took that away. Now you want to take away someone's right to burn garbage? No, not garbage, because there's already a ban on garbage. Papers, leave. You want to do away with that? I don't understand why. So. But I do see a trend here. That personal property is under attack by this city council. I really think I should take that into account. You're shaking your head.
Can't be even saying it. It's crazy to ever hear. It's literally crazy. Sorry, go ahead. Do three minutes. But.
Taking away our right to park or have somebody live on an RV. Take away the right to burn. Leaves and paper or whatever. It just looks like a trend. I'm curious what's coming down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Estabro. Well, it shows that you have one on agenda and then another one off agenda.
I wanted to talk about the housing stuff.
Well, you had one on task force, which is on agenda, and then one on Hastings, which is off agenda. So just on the task force part. Jerry Estabro, 326 Hawthorne. Okay, task force. Where's the money coming from? And where are the houses to be placed? That's simple. Because the citizens of this town do not be, do not need to be financing more crap for our homes. I'm sorry. It cost us an arm and a leg, and we do not want it in our neighborhood. You want to put more houses in? Go for it. But put it in your neighborhood. Because we've put up with, yeah, you laugh. Do you want to come up and check my mail? And I come back to my house and this asshole comes up behind me? Yeah. And he, and he comes up behind me and says, I'm right behind you. Have a good evening. Yeah. Have your wife go through. We don't want any more in our neighborhood. Amy?
Oh, I was up with.
Okay. Okay. Any other ones that have achieved it yet? Under presentation, audit report.
Mayor, councilor's staff. Tammy Trowbridge, Finance Director. This is simply a report on our annual audit that was conducted between the end of August and September, mid-October. No action is being asked of council at this time, but this is just to update you as to the final status of that audit. Attached is the summary of the audit. I apologize. For the length of that summary. It was a big one, but again, it was a clean opinion. And we encountered no significant difficulty. And I'm pleased to report that there were no disagreements during the audit. So if you look through my report, I kind of just highlighted the, the things that they had mentioned that I felt were noteworthy to call out on the two pager staff report. There were on page M of my management discussion and analysis. There were three items, three areas where we had overspent the category, I mean, general fund, and you can do that up to 5%, but it's not a good practice. And so there's just a few things this year that were not expected. The cost of health insurance and there was some increases that I try to do a zero-based budget. And so when you use the information that you have in March, you don't always have all the information. And so the city managers was over in that area by 1.6%. Community development was over their total budget by 1.8% due to a long-tenured employee retiring and having a large vacation payout and comp payout on the promotion to the staff person and, but our personnel costs were still under the projected budget amount. And then also our attorney costs were over slightly. There was a cost increase by the firm in January of the year, and we had a few things. The union negotiations went on for longer than anticipated. Several issues relating to planning ordinances, community development. And it just went, you know, $1,400 more. Revenues were greater than the budgeted amount by 4.2%. And if you have any other questions, I'm available to answer those.
On the SDC annual report.
Mayor, councilor's staff. There's an SDC annual report that in the system development charges. Thank you, Jerry. We have different types of system development charges, which is fees that we charge for access to city infrastructure, streets, stormwater, water, wastewater, and parks. And Oregon revised statute states that the local government should provide an annual accounting for system development charges, showing the total amount of system development charge revenues collected for each system and the projects that were funded in the previous fiscal year. And this report satisfies that requirement. As you, as you can see, there have been no projects funded out of our SDCs this year. And that we have balances in all five of those areas and that there was increase in every one of those areas and continuing to be as this year's progressed.
Any questions? Okay, under urban renewal activities report.
Mayor, councilor, could you go over to me now? So this is, will kind of provide you an overview and some of the identified guiding force that led us into the new activity. It all started with four initial projects. And so those projects are, we have kind of a slide for each one, but Ford's pond. And so you can see kind of what, how far it's come to date. Obviously, we've had a few delays, so this will be concluded in the spring. And the redevelopment of Central Avenue, working with ODOT, that was family, transfers of authority, as well as working through the improvements. We worked with each of the jurisdictions, improving pretty much curb-to-curb from church down to the eastern city limit. And that then spearheaded with the included streetlights, that spearheaded the Christmas lights, beginning with the streetlight Christmas tree, moving into the tree and park. And then we also have the splash pad at Central Park. And that was one of the items that we also had borrowed, borrowed internal funds, and I'm going to have Tammy talk a little bit about the urban renewal. So these projects only led us to wanting more. So as you can see, we went out and hired Elaine Howard Consulting. She helped us move to the feasibility report. And that helped with creating kind of four parts to work with the renewal. Stimulating the economy, defining downtown, eradicating light, and improving visibility. So these projects, we go into or to recruit traded sector businesses on the industrial parklands. We participated with the county and a facility into the wetland mitigation on that. Come a long way. We now have public sanitary working on their plan, on their. Partnering with the school district and the community while we're working to towards creating a multi-use sports park here in Sutherland. Establishing our downtown beautification program, incentivizing storefront improvements, recruiting businesses to either relocate or locate in our downtown. And then working with ODOT and other area businesses, creating the transportation improvement necessary down around. So here is the industrial park where the wetland credits were mitigated. The sports park off of White Street. Going into the downtown. Backside brewing kind of was the first of the urban renewal improvement.
Can I, I have one to pipe in here. So this is a, I got a great story on this one. We had just created urban renewal. And a business owner in town is, you may have heard of him, his name is Jack Trowbridge. He calls me and he says, I got this guy named Casey. And he's ready to cut a deal to bring a backside outpost. And so he, that was the very first one in which we committed $25,000 storefront improvement money. And he says, if you commit that money, I'll bring the business to Sutherland. So it's been a great asset.
So they, Sutherland also took advantage of the grant program. And this is a work in progress clearly with the potholes. So the design and engineering is completed. We are working to go out to bid for the paid improvements, which will also include sidewalk along North State and First. The Body Shop Total Fitness, bit of an improvement, I would say. Upland Height. And then we have the bank building, which is working. It's more unseen, but we had applied for the Oregon Main Street Program Revitalization Grant. Received an award for $200,000 and $60,000 of urban renewal dollars will match that funding for the grant purposes, and they are doing asbestos abatement, which is completed, their re-riffing, and that's near completed, if not completed. The HVAC system and free fire system. So those will be the unseen improvements, and this will allow businesses to have a, that three, I think it's three businesses downstairs and two residential upstairs. Web tracks is our building that was most recently completed. It is, they also took advantage, which it was maybe a pretty square of that concrete by the end of it, but they did an amazing job, and it was a beautiful addition across from our city. The Central Plaza Park, if some of you recall, the FFA students designed this. Prior to COVID, it took a while with COVID hitness to get completion. But now it is, and it can also be utilized as an outdoor seating area. The Everett parking lot, also discount transmission. So those are properties that were recently purchased through the urban renewal, and the task force will be working on improvements for that property, hopefully within the fall. Moving on to the exit 136, transportation, circulation, and building, grocery store retailer recruitment, tourism, transportation oriented facilities, and housing. So those are some of the projects that are continuing. We are still early in our urban renewal projects, but a lot. In the meantime, new business investments and community events do not happen in a vacuum. Tesla has then come to our area. As well as tractor supply. The new apartment complex that you'll be seeing going in on the former driving range of the golf course. Going quickly. And some of you may have already visited Evergreen Family Medicine. I know I have. I have one of those kids. And so it turned out an amazing building, had a penetration to our community. And we have Grand Central Stage, which has been a huge hit and just keeps getting bigger. We've had events, new or prior events, Sutherland Throwdown, Oregon Showdown Truck Show, and drunk retreat have all been a major success with here. And that concludes the power for.
Now on the ODOT exit 136, Dakota Street proposal.
Mayor, councilor, could you go over to me development? So tonight, we want to bring forward some information that we received from ODOT. We have Chris Hunter here from ODOT, who was nice enough to join us for questions as well. There's a lot of information and work that we've been working with them on throughout this. ODOT has recently conducted a study for a roundabout, which is, I believe, one of their main requirements before they determine what can be done in an intersection. This was to be located at Highway 138 and Dakota Street. Which is kind of been one of those big topics in our department for sure. The community has been expressing the need for the signal at this intersection for several years. And with the increase in residential and commercial development on the north side of Central, with the addition of the potential development from the south side. A signal would give the community that and the developers that sense of certainty that they don't need. We've met and worked with the group. We've met a few of them tonight. The surrounding businesses and property owners who have expressed their interest and desire for the roundabout. While they seem to believe the installation of this bike would serve as a precursor to the closure of Park Hill restricting the access of businesses along Highway 138 Central. We also have listened to those neighborhood residents, current businesses, and broader community wanting that immediate solution of the growing traffic concern. Insisting on that. In the discussions with ODOT, this proposed signal that we have is the improvement does not hinder the future planning and transportation improvement in the IAP, which is our interchange area management plan. Or are together with those ongoing discussions, deliberations with the development interests and drainstorms, so have that internal circulation. We're not changing any of the ingress egress at this time. It doesn't trigger any of that. We can continue to move forward. We're not saying that a roundabout is not an option. It could be. There is a bit of a small build difference. It's eight to $10 million for a roundabout is what is estimated where versus this traffic signal that would be approximately two miles. The roundabout would take about seven plus years and would be required to be on what's called the STIP, the statewide improvement plan, state transportation improvement plan, sorry. And even though this could be recommended to be on that, it may not make that cut, so it could prolong any of them. As we're trying to address the broader community issue. ODOT has approved us a signal, so waiting for the roundabout to come to fruition could have that negative impact on the community as we continue to grow on the left side. Based on the feedback that we have received from the community and the continued growth west of the interstate, it's been expressed that the signal is needed. In summary, this is a broader community issue that has a viable solution to the immediate traffic safety issue. The light is mentioned in the IAP, but would not, as stated, trigger those additional IAP impacts, such as closing off Park Hill for the it could be 20, 30, 40 years before those. And so I guess at this point, not a so at this point, we'll have to.
Hi, Chris Hunter, Department of Transportation Area Manager out of our Roseford office. And really, I think Christie hit it right. And we've been working with the city and some of the community members for quite a while, looking at our options that we have on the west side. Currently, we have gone through a review process that allowed us an opportunity to, in essence, approve through our state traffic engineer, the installation of a signal that meets all of the warrants required by federal statute in order to install a signal. That doesn't mean we can't look at a roundabout like Christie said, but there is a huge cost difference in right now. Around about funding, Christie's right. We're looking at a roundabout right now with Douglas County out in Rose Road. Garden Valley, Norrose Road intersection, and currently that's funded around $9 million. And it'll probably be something similar. This one could be a little bit more expensive because we have some other properties nearby that they have to take some land or some parking in order to get one to fit. This is also a truck freight route, and so we have to make sure that we accommodate large truck movements. And so that usually facilitates a little larger roundabout than in some other areas. And like Christie said, to fund that one, we don't have $9 million laying around just to throw at this. And so we have to start planning now, looking for funding opportunities or other things. We're currently working on our 2730 step. And so it will probably be the next step cycle after that. So you're looking at, you know, 30 and beyond before this project would even come to fruition. Providing we get the funding. Part of the concern is that though the signal meets warrants, we currently don't have a safety and operational major issue that really makes it competitive when we're looking at grants or other opportunities, because there are lots of funding opportunities out there. But they're really based around safety and operational issues. And currently, aside from helping spur development and those types of activities, operationally, it still works out there. We don't have a lot of safety issues or other things we're trying to do. And so right now, what we brought to the city is we can look at installing the signal. We have approval. That approval is good for five years. Then we can look at it again. It doesn't mean you can't do a signal after that, but we have to go back through the analysis. But that's something that if there's a desire to move forward with now to put some sort of infrastructure in and bring some kind of solidify, hey, this is going to be the place to kind of connect to coming out of the south side of 138 or other things that we can get the signal in and let's start to those improvements. And so it's really the option of the city, you know, what they want to do, and the course of action that you want to take. So here to answer any other questions or provide any other information.
What was the benefit of a roundabout?
There are definitely benefits of a roundabout. Roundabouts typically are safer. You have less conflict points because everybody, in essence, don't have to stop. You're not crossing traffic. You get in this big circle. So from that standpoint, they are typically safer from a, you know, as compared to a signal. The signal, it'll operate just fine. It'll last just as long. Roundabouts takes some people trying to get used to it. We're definitely, we get a lot of opposition when we start talking about roundabouts. But they do function. There are definitely improvements or, you know, plus sides of it. A lot of it is, like I said, set some safety. Does provide traffic calming, although the traffic simple does as well, because you got to hit the roundabout and go around. If you hit a green on a signal, you may not slow down. And so it does provide some natural calming as well of traffic. But the signals will still provide traffic breaks. We're looking at if the signal is going to go in, ODOT's going to look at, you know, trying to make some improvements from the freeway west. At least kind of improve that section, bring it up to a three-lane section. At least get some sidewalk down one side, so, you know, we can continue to have those left turn movements off the highway. Again, there's not an operational issue that requires us to come in and, you know, block off some of those accesses or close them or make them right in, right out. Ultimately, that's the plan. But as mentioned, I don't foresee that happening, maybe not even in my lifetime around here. Because we don't have that significant, although depending on development, it could make other triggers. The signal would actually be placed, the mast arms and the foundations would actually be placed to accommodate the five-lane section that's identified in the IAP. So it wouldn't be a throwaway system that if things hadn't developed and get larger, that signal will still be there. We'll have the long mast arms. We'll be able to accommodate that change of design, I guess, between the bridge, I-5 as we go west. And at that point, we can also look at if we have to start looking at cutting off some of the accesses or making them right in, right out. We can have, we can look at return opportunities. We're doing something similar there in the green area on 42. We're installing some barrier. We have a lot of accidents, some fatalities of folks crossing that highway trying to get onto it. We're actually putting barrier down the middle of the road in Kelly's Corner and another signal. We're putting returnability so folks can turn around and get to those without having to go long distances or too far out of direction in order to get to residents, businesses, or anything. So.
Can you please make it clear on the record, because one of the concerns is that if we move forward with the light, we lock, we don't want to see Park Hill closed. Okay? And we're working with the area landowners to come up with alternatives that you might consider. If we put this light in, that doesn't prohibit us to continue to move towards and presenting those options, right?
No, the, the signal does not trigger cutting Park Hill off of the ramp. It doesn't trigger, like I said, the restriction of accesses. It doesn't do any of that. Nothing right now is going to trigger that unless we start having safety or operational issues. And currently, we don't have that. The signal is just one step closer to that build-out that the IAP has identified. It's just a piece in that cog as we move along.
In terms of maintenance on the traffic light versus the roundabout long-term, which is a better
I think a roundabout, we don't have a lot of experience with them in our region or in our area. We don't have a roundabouts. But there are pavement, there are landscaping, there are other things. Those things have to be refurbished periodically. A signal, for the most part, aside from the electronics or the signal heads, are fairly maintenance-free. There is some electricity costs, obviously, to operate it. But overall, for a signal, I mean, we've got some out there that are 50-plus years old, but we've never had to replace some of the, the controllers and things we've updated. But aside from that, maintenance on a signal is actually fairly low. A roundabout, again, it's an infrastructure, pavement, concrete, other things that do require periodic maintenance. You shouldn't have to maintain it for some period of time. Once it's first, it should last for a good 10 years before you have to do something. More and more people are getting used to it. They do, they do operate.
I have a question. I'm trying to envision that as a roundabout, and Dakota comes down and tees into Highway 138. If you're going to put it a roundabout, how much land does that take up and what businesses are affected? Does it blow subway in Dakota parking lot out of the water or what?
Obviously, the desire is not to, we don't want to be in the business of owning subways or other. Obviously, the desire is not to, we don't want to be in the business of owning subways or other businesses. But yes, there are some corners of the property that you can do is shift it. You can shift it to the west or to the south. To try and get away from those properties because you have more undeveloped properties on the other side. You opt to buy more of those properties. But you also have a grade and a slope. And so as you go to the south. You're talking more excavation. You might need some retaining walls or other things that might ultimately cost more money as well. And so there's some advantages and disadvantages other ways. Or you take some of the parking lot, maybe not the subway building, but maybe some of the school street pizza. I mean, we don't know. We haven't laid it out. I know Kittleson's done some layouts. In the past, and I think we have some concerns with the size of the roundabout. We think it needs to be bigger, but we haven't done a huge study on that either. But it definitely takes a lot of land, likely. Might have to be a two lane roundabout to help accommodate larger trucks, the freight now. So that could make it quite work.
Aaron, is any of that north side of one thirty eight wetlands? Right there.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the wetlands and it involves.
Litigation for sure.
Litigation on that.
But there is some on the south side as well.
Yes.
And. But I think even with the bigger light and the falls, we're going to be into that. We're going to be into some wetland litigation.
Yeah, that whole ditch on the north side, I think, is a wetland. And so as we even look at improvements of making to the highway, we're going to get into some potential wetland where that will impact.
My question is, and I don't know. Is there any plans to go south with the street?
Like Chris is speaking.
Yeah, so this would give that certainty of location. But the internal circulation, we would work with the property owners. Developers that of interest in order to move forward with that. We, there's a generalized plan that has been proposed and so. We would. Any other questions? Thank you very much. On to the fifth agenda. Now a motion for November thirteenth, two thousand twenty three minutes. Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Counselor Smalley.
Hi.
Counselor Grassman.
Hi.
Counselor Hamilton.
Hi.
Counselor Woods.
Hi.
Counselor Daigle.
Hi.
Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries.
On the public hearing. Plan amendment and zone change for Grove Lane property. Opening up the public hearing. Staff report, city planner. Council, mayor, maybe debate, planner. Um, what we have here tonight is back to the public hearing, like you said, receive written and oral testimony from parties in favor and or opposition. For mutual comments. For what's from Sam Robinson and property owner, he submitted application for climate change to build from a residential. Don't to the medium density residential zone on some properties on the side of Grove Lane. That was part of the annexation into the city limits. So what we will do is post a public hearing if you'd like. There any public comment in favor? Any public comment in opposition? Any for neutral? What type of housing are they putting in there? Is it single homes or apartment complexes? That's not part of the applicable criteria for a climate zone change, but at the time they are currently going to single family law. At this time, we'll be closing public hearing. All right, on to council business. Ornet's plan amendment and zone change for Grove Lane. Properties, reading title only. Council and the mayor. Um, so this is, consider approving at the first reading of the ordinance for Sam Robinson and all for the planned rent and zone change. Plan department file number twenty three S zero one zero. Then ordinance would formally approve the plan map to the low density hillside to the medium density. Plan and the zoning of residential hillside. Medium density residential. Can I, can I look up for just a minute? I'm sorry, city recorder has to read the ordinance by title. Into the record.
In ordinance amending the city of Sutherland comprehensive plan map and zoning map to amend the comprehensive plan map. From low density hillside to medium density concurrent with a zoning map change. From RH residential hillside to R two medium density residential property described as tax lot. Lots two zero one, three hundred and four hundred in section nineteen C of township twenty five S range zero five. West WM, the subject three point eight one acre property is located at eight forty two, eight eighty and nine forty for Grove Lane and described here in.
Well, now that's just all good stuff. I moved off to approve the first reading of the ordinance. Approved the first reading, the ordinance with amendments or not approved, the first reading of the said ordinance.
Everybody jump at once.
We can have a second. All right. I have a first and a second to approve for the first reading title or only of ordinance, plan amendment and zone change. For Grove's properties as presented. Any discussion? That's the rule saying. Because it's an amendment to the company. And follow the rules. Any other discussion? Okay, let's go.
Counselor Smalley.
Hi.
Counselor Grassman.
Hi.
Counselor Hamilton.
Hi.
Counselor Woods.
Hi.
Counselor Daigle.
Okay.
Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Moshia carries.
Under ordinance amending SMC chapter eight point six, regulating outdoor burning, first reading title only. City reporter, can you please leave your title for the record?
I would love to. An ordinance of the city of Sutherland amending chapter eight point two six of the Sutherland municipal code regulating outdoor burning.
Fire chief, could you please explain this for everybody?
Okay. Mayor, council, Mike Lane, fire chief. Currently, SMC chapter eight point two six regulates outdoor burning in the city of Sutherland. Period. Hey. Every spring, D F P A puts on fire season. At that time, we close outdoor burning. When fire season goes off in the fall, after the rains come, we open outdoor burning back up.
So we can burn at that.
We are not banning. Outdoor burning year round. Only during fire season. We do ban, the city of Sutherland bans trash burning year round. We don't allow burning barrels. You can't go out and burn the baby's diapers and all the nasty smelling plastics and. That's, that stuff is banned. Talking yard debris only. Okay, so fire season hits, we shut it down. Fire season goes away, we open it back up.
And during fire season, it's part of the government's salary. So you fall under them.
Fires, yeah, fire season is actually set by the Douglas Forest Protective Association, which is part of the Oregon State Forest Department. So they, they monitor fuel moistures. They do everything they need to do to set fire season. That generally occurs around the first of June. The rains come in the fall, September, late September, early October, hopefully before deer season. They take fire season off. Go ahead and burn your yard debris on October, whatever day they take fire season off. Because we're not banning outdoor burning one hundred percent of it.
What, what did change? Were, did we allow outdoor burning a little longer prior to this? And now we're just.
No, actually, I'm just cleaning up this ordinance because we've actually been following D F P A and D F P A's rules since I've been the fire chief here in two thousand seventeen. They put fire season on, we shut down, break. So it's just cleaning up some language in the, in the ordinance. It's not the new ordinance by, or new chapter in the municipal code by any means. I think that's what Roseburg and Winston, they all follow suit, what the F P A says, right? Yeah, fire district two, I think, westerns, I think I have to ask really. City of Roseburg is a little different. They actually, and that wasn't the chief there, but I was almost the chief. They actually ban outdoor burning. In the city of Roseburg. Except for two times a year, once in April, once in October. And you gotta buy about a seventy five dollar permit to burn your pile of brush. We don't write permits. We don't charge for permits because one, we don't write them. So the only thing we'll do is we go out and we'll check a pile. If somebody complains. Other than that, burn to your heart's content, as long as it's not fires.
Well, actually, this amendment is to clear up some of the verbiage and like the permitting that we don't do anymore.
We do not. Clean that up. The only permits I do write, and it's very rare that I do write these. Is if, for instance, if the school wants to have a bonfire for homecoming. And it's still fire season, I have to write them an exemption to have their burn pile over. Because it was a short agenda. I've actually had these changes made for about six months, but the council's been so busy, it's like, I'll take it when we're not quite so busy.
Any other questions? All right, can I have a motion? Ordinance amending chapter eight point two six of the sovereign, sovereign. Regulating outdoor burning, first reading. First and a second, any discussion?
Counselor Smalley.
Hi.
Counselor Grassman.
Hi.
Counselor Hamilton.
Hi.
Counselor Woods.
Hi.
Counselor Daigle.
Hi.
Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Moshia carries.
On the resolution twenty twenty three point one four, fire apparatus acceptance, fire chief.
Mayor City Council, Mike Lane, Fire Chief. This, this resolution is really just a formality. I mean, twenty twenty two, fire department applied for a grant in state of Oregon for the. Piece of equipment from the state fire marshal's office. It's actually called a type three heavy brush engine. We got the contract for that. And one of the stipulations in, in the contract is that this governing body needs to accept that from the state of Oregon. So I need a resolution, resolution from you to accept that piece of.
They provided and we accept.
They will, they are providing it. We should get it early, early twenty four. Soon as we get our stuff turned in, we get put on the list and. Hopefully we'll get it.
We've already done it. This is just a resolution for.
This is a resolution for the contract.
Have a motion? I'll make a motion for the resolution twenty twenty three. For a motion and a second to approve it. Any discussion? Is this a new?
Good piece of equipment. Definitely brand new. Rosenbauer's building it. It's just a heavy, it's a heavy brush engine in between our little pickups, which is a type six and the big fire engines, which is type one. So somewhere about in the middle.
And then after three years, we give it back or can we renew?
I think that they will reevaluate, reevaluate the program after three years. But they, they have the option of giving it to us after three years. For the lower price of, for us of zero dollars. Piece of equipment is three hundred ninety thousand dollars. They're giving it to us. Plus thirty five hundred dollars a year, I think, for some maintenance costs.
Any other discussion, questions?
Counselor Smalley.
Yes.
Counselor Grassman.
Hi.
Counselor Hamilton.
Hi.
Counselor Woods.
Hi.
Counselor Daigle.
Yes.
Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Moshia carries.
Thank you, chief. Under reports and discussion, housing and homeless task force.
Air counselors, staff, and ability services. I'm here to as succinctly as possible answer questions that were left over from the last meeting. So to be out of these responses on the record and manage any other questions you may have. So I'm just going to run down this list as quickly as I can and try to be succinct. First one is who's providing or taking care of utilities? This is referring to basic. The only public utility currently on site is water. And the city's taking care of that. Who's paying for the utilities? The city of case for water and trash pickup. How is citizen tax money being used for the camp? My response was very carefully, I don't mean to be snarky, I just mean to tell everybody that you're being. Very judicious and careful about anything that's done out there that has an expense attached to it. We're doing water and trash removal, some bark and fill materials been sent out there. The shelter structures are provided through Uncle Heart, the nonprofit. The city has provided some bridge funding in the past to Uncle Heart that's been repaid. A question about whether the sheds were inspected and permitted. The fire department's been out there, looked at it, and alarms have been installed. Permitted, no. HB two thousand six, HB thirty three ninety five. And the governor's emergency declaration provide new guidance on the sighting of emergency sleeping quarters. That's what these are. And the upcoming short session, according to the information I've received in the last week. Is expected to offer further guidance on how we're to proceed in the future, and this will affect not just us, but all of the cities in the state. Is there electrical and plumbing? Not at this time. The sheds have, some of the sheds have limited solar electric power, but there is no electrical and plumbing at this time. Are there smoke alarms in windows? Yes to both. There are alarms and there are windows. Is there proper ventilation? These are very small sleeping rooms that are under a hundred square feet and there's a window and a door. Any more ventilation and you just as well be off and attend something. Are the shipping containers insured? To the best of my knowledge, and I have to check with Uncle Heart, they're not insured for property damage, but they are insured for liability. The city has an insurance policy. And Uncle Heart has secured an insurance policy listing the city as an additional insured, putting them in the first place. So we have their liability insurance as primary. Is Hastings Village under property insure? Kind of a duplicate question. Liability policies are in place both from the city and Uncle Heart. Who's paying the insurance and how much is it? The city has a policy. There was no additional coverage required. Uncle Heart is paying for their policy and I have no idea what the cost is. If you're interested, they'd probably be willing to tell you, hoping you volunteer to pay part of it. Have the wetlands been mitigated? The determination of what part, if any, of the Hastings Village property is considered wetlands has never, as far as we know, been determined. Existing maps provide conflicting information and the responsible agencies would have to evaluate and make their own determination, and that has not been done. What solutions are being done to help the campers get out of homelessness? There are no solutions that are effective and helpful for everyone out there. Each person is a unique individual. They are all case managed if they wish to be. To, in order to find the best answers for their individual problems and concerns. There are many agencies out there that are providing services. And case management is available to anybody who's willing and able to accept. Are they getting help finding jobs? Yes, there are a number of agencies that are helping them do that. Are they getting job training? Not at Hastings Village because there is no suitable meeting or training facility out there. At least not right now. Can they build the tiny homes themselves with help? Perhaps in the future, I guess, is our best. Uh, perhaps in the future, I guess, is our best estimation. There's no facility, no training, no tools or equipment on site to do that. Uh, what is the city's plan? I'm not sure what this question actually refers to, but I have a few answers, I suppose. The first of which is I don't understand the focus of the question. But our intent is to treat our homeless people with consideration and care. Uh, to work to expand available housing in our community, not just for them, but for the entire community. And to continue to encourage the use of all of the available resources that we tapped into. And we are encouraging our representatives, particularly at the upcoming short session, to pay particular attention to us, as, as has been promised in the past, to give us some financial help, to make it a better place. So those are the questions. I don't know if there's further discussion or questions about the actual homeless task force that was mentioned. But we believe, uh, I think, in our discussions with Uncle Heart, will be very effective and very helpful for the whole, for the whole community. Any other thoughts?
Well, I, I, this thing goes up and on. We would like for you to maybe consider directing us to possibly creating, remember when we did the, uh, the fire services working group? And how well that worked, uh, maybe bringing in, um, more people, uh, to look at the, the entire rainbow, I hate to use that word anymore, it's so controversial, but, uh, the entire spectrum of, uh, housing and how we might be able to, uh, play a role in encouraging it. Uh, as well as giving advice on how we should proceed on the homeless end. So we talked about it as staff. If, if you thought it might be reasonable, we kind of put out a notice, and saying we're looking for people to participate in a, you know, short-term task force to look at these things. But it's totally up to you. We keep hearing all the time, how come I didn't know about this, or what's going on there and that. We do the best we can, but maybe a task force or a working group, uh, might, uh, be advantageous. So we just wanted to pass that on to you, Mayor. If that's something you guys would like to do, we can put it on the next agenda and actually have some, a discussion on it.
I think that'd be good.
How many tenants there has it increased over the months? About stable?
Last number I heard was thirty-one. So it's gone down a little bit. There were two, uh, older women out there that were recent inhabitants of the village. They found permanent housing, they've been with Dawn and up, so that's good news. One of them was sleeping on a park bench on Central. Uh, so there are good things happening out there, but, but this is pretty normal. When the, when the weather really turns, the, the occupancy out there goes down. So it's about thirty, thirty-one right now.
Could you address, because it's been, I keep hearing it, that, um, we don't take in permanently people from other communities? It's Sutherland and Oakland, right?
Right, uh, we don't, but, but we're, we're still required to provide it as an option. So anybody coming in from outside the community, it's written in the rules, Chad, help us put that together to be legal. That if you come in and say, I'm from, uh, Grants Pass, and I'd like to stay the night, they only get to stay the night. There's no, there's no residency, uh, allowed.
I, I wouldn't say it as an adjunct to that, though, that, that the, the folks out there and the service providers do their best to connect them with their community and, you know, provide transportation if they can. There's that intent. Our, our villages were, for our.
Thank you. I just want that to be clear, because it's still going around out there, that we take anybody.
Well, we, we talked about that briefly with the last meeting, the whole, if you build it, they will come thing. It just doesn't seem to be happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Under city manager report?
Yes, ma'am, I, I just wanted to, uh, let you know, um, we have franchise agreements, and those fall within my purview of responsibility, and negotiated a number of them. Sometimes we create them by ordinance and bring them to council to approve. Sometimes, uh, there's a continuation of it. Well, I know, but my, my microphone comes in and out. So, uh, when we negotiated the Avista franchise in two thousand and fourteen, uh, Steve from Avista was gonna be here, and he just couldn't make it, Steve, then. Uh, we, we wrote a, a ten-year with, they're usually twenty years. We wrote a ten-year with, at the end of ten years, if we both like each other and say it's okay, uh, we just extended another ten years. I wanted Steve to be here for you to introduce them, and we're perfectly fine and happy. It's a five percent franchise agreement, so we're gonna continue that for another ten years. I also want to take, uh, I also want to bring Sam from Pacific Power for you to meet him as well. Steve will come to a meeting for you to meet. They're both very helpful to us. Steve especially with economic development, and Sam with almost anything we want, and he's really been helpful. Provided vehicles for putting banners up on Main Street, helped us split up the trees, and, uh, so they're both good, uh, partners in the community.
Under council comments, remember monthly meeting time is limited. We've got questions or statements that are likely to benefit the group. Individual comments and questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside the meetings. Council with her.
I think the, uh, the idea of a council or a task force for the, uh, homeless camp, a great idea. You want to donate your time, be part of the solution, not just complain about the problem we're all dealing with. That's a great idea. I could get behind that. And, uh, good job on the trees, Aaron, for the great, good place. But, that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Grossman.
Just wishing everyone a merry Christmas and a happy season, New Year.
Counselor President Hamilton. Um, I, Sean took my words, he looked at my wrist, I'm gonna go. I just really thank you guys for all the trees in, on Central, and as a part of you guys, that's, you know, a big job, and I appreciate you guys, and it looks wonderful. The other thing is too, I agree with the task force, I think it would be a good thing, or I think it would be a good thing if some of the public involved, you know, and, uh, let them see person. And Mary.
Counselor Woods, I would echo those same comments, like, uh, both, uh, Counselor Smalley and, and Hamilton said about getting a task force together. I think that would be really beneficial for those in the community who want to get involved. We, we sit on up here, we didn't just come up here because we want to be home on Monday nights. There are things to, to be doing too, but we wanted to be involved to be beneficial to our community. So those who want to be involved, there's always an opportunity to, so, um, get involved with it, maybe there's all kinds of things available, whether it's parks or a task force. They're out there. Also, I'd like to mention the Timber Town Parade that's gonna be happening next Saturday. Come out, see the festivities with that. That'll be a lot of fun for everyone to, to enjoy, um, coming together in a small community. Really bring, you don't see those in large communities, so it's really nice to see everyone come together for Christmas and the other holidays we get to celebrate, so, uh.
Counselor Daigle.
The only thing I really got was, I was kind of disappointed. I can't remember when we did it, I think it was June. I asked if we could, the council could get together and talk about homeless situations, and I was told, um, we're gonna wait until we get to third grade, which I don't think ever happened. I don't remember, I don't remember being together and talking about homeless situation.
Well, actually, we've been talking about it quite a bit. Or not, but we, as a group, have talked about it quite a bit. We basically have to be up here to do that, because if there's more than three of us, it's, it's a quarm, well, yeah. We should have brought our, yeah. Bringing up a one of these, we do say that, or whatever we report, bring up the next one.
Yeah. And we could make, and, I mean, it's, again, I said this before, the mayor sets an agenda, if you want to create a, uh, a workshop and, uh, carve a workshop out of, uh, the beginning and end of a council meeting, if the rest of council wants to do it.
Feel free to talk about that, let me know what.
You should know.
I just, I just wanted to remind people that we, we might sit up here on council, but we live in this community. We have to live in the city of Sutherland in order to do what we do. So we live in this city just as well, and get everyone who's in this having a couple comments as well. We want the festival.
And I, I wanted to thank everybody that showed up tonight, and I really appreciate people that are coming up here and, um, and speaking uh, on, on and off agenda items. I think it's really important that, um, our citizens are voicing their opinions, letting us know. You know, we're not, we're not talking during your time for really want to, um, respect your three minutes that you have up here, but we do listen. And we're trying to take your thoughts into consideration. And I do think that having that task force and involving you guys that want to be a part of it is a great idea. We're almost forward with that, so. I encourage you to show up every, every month, and please continue to give us your feedback. We really appreciate that. And please come Saturday to the, it's a great, it's a great event. So the last thing on the list is public comment. Purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items off the agenda. Time limit of three minutes for citizens shall apply. And, uh, Sherry, if you want to come back up for the Hastings Village.
There is to brick, three twenty-six Hawthorne Street. I was at the November, uh, council meeting and listened to the thoughts and ideas and reactions of all of the people that were there. We had the police state how wonderful the village is. And I call it the village, because I get tired of stuff. So I call it the village. How, how glad they are that it's over there, because they no longer have to deal with those people on the streets, in front of buildings, in the parks. They think it's great. I've talked, we had the guy that was from one of the businesses. He thinks it's wonderful. I talked to other people about businesses. They think it's wonderful. Because the homeless are not in their face, in their stores, in front of their stores, making a mess, whatever they're doing. That's great. We no longer hear from the people up on State Street when they were up camp up in that little triangular area next to the water district. The people over there aren't complaining anymore. Why? Because the homeless have gone. And the pattern, isn't it? The people at Hawthorne Eddie Johnson Street, we're still complaining. They're not all here, but we're all complaining, because it's still there on our streets every day, every day. The summer, I thought that Hawthorne Street had become a homeless highway. I kid you not. People walking up and down our streets, pulling their buggies full of junk, oh, stuff. Every day. They are tweaking out, up and down our street. My grandson gets to see these people under the influence of who knows what, don't want to know. He doesn't need to see that. Neither do the little guys next door. We have a right to be protected. They have a right to be protected from seeing that kind of stuff. It's hard enough, as it is, raising our children not to go down that road. You know, we've all seen that, um, back in the day, they had the commercial. They crack the egg off of the end of the frying pan. This is on drugs. Our street, that's our brains on drugs. That's, we don't need a commercial anymore. It's, it's on our street, and they're seeing. We can't keep anything out in the yards, because it's gone. We have them going through our mailboxes. Where's Ruski? Anybody know where Rusty's at? Go ahead, ask. Can't find him, but he was in our mailboxes. All I'm asking is, you have consideration for us and our position, our livelihood, and them coming in and being a pain in the butt. I'm chasing them around, trying to get them out of our neighborhood at four in the morning, because their day starts at dark. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
I just wanted to tell you all, you had some great questions about the Dakota Street, the light, the, um, roundabout. And I'm anxious for you to listen to Mr. Kittleson and what he's gonna bring. I think he's gonna bring a lot of clarity to a lot of those questions. And one other thing, uh, it's an observation and a comment. City Sutherland's done a great job of sprucing up the city and, and, uh, the project, uh, that you have started. And I would just like to say, on a roundabout, there are beautiful aesthetic coming into your city. Uh, they, they can be made to be, uh, really eye-popping and, and without a huge expense. And I think that that, when you're coming from the coast, coming in, I think people will drive into Sutherland and right away, uh, see how much, you know, the, the city means to the people that are running it and the, and the community, so. I think if on, on a visual aid, the, the roundabout's gonna have some really, really neat features to it that would help coming into the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Good night.